Okay, now we move on to bylaw number 268. This is a bylaw for imposing taxes upon lands in the district and provide for imposing a percentage addition to encourage prompt payment thereof. The trustees of the Union Bay Improvement District enact as follows. For the year 2017, there is hereby levied the following taxes. A tax of $345 on all parcels of land classified into Group A. And a tax of 0.00 on all parcels of land classified into Group B. The first installment of $172.50 shall be due and payable on or before the second day of March 2017. The second installment of $172.50 shall be due and payable on the 31st day of August 2017. A percentage addition of 10 percent of the amount thereof shall be added to all taxes remaining unpaid after the said dates. In addition, taxes remain unpaid on the first day of March next following the date upon which taxes are levied shall bear interest at the rate prescribed by the Lieutenant Governor and Council under the Taxation Rule Area Act as set out under Section 717 of Local Government Act. This bylaw may be cited as a taxation bylaw 2017. Could I get a motion to accept the first reading of bylaw number 268?
I make a motion to accept 268.
Can I get a second for that? Second trustee. Elliot? All in favor? Okay, the motion is carried. So here we go one more time. Bylaw number 268, taxation bylaw 2017. A bylaw for imposing taxes upon lands in the district and provide for imposing a percentage addition to encourage prompt payment thereof. The trustees of the Union Bay Improvement District enact as follows. For the year 2017, there is hereby levied the following taxes. A tax of $345 on all parcels of land classified into Group A. A tax of 0.00 on all parcels of land classified into Group B. The first installment of $172.50 shall be due and payable on or before the second day of March 2017. The second installment of $172.50 shall be due and payable on the 31st day of August 2017. A percentage addition of 10 percent of the amount thereof shall be added to all taxes remaining unpaid after said dates. In addition, taxes remaining unpaid on the first day of March next following the date upon which taxes are levied shall bear interest at the rate prescribed by the Lieutenant Governor and Council under the Taxation Rule Area Act as set out under Section 717 of Local Government Act. This bylaw may be cited as a taxation bylaw 2017. Okay, could I get a motion to accept the second reading of bylaw 268?
To make a motion to accept the second reading of bylaw 268.
My second.
Okay, all in favor? The motion's carried. All right. Now, let's go on to D, it's the regular meeting schedule. Well, I'll start off by saying, because the dynamics, and I think I said this at first, the dynamics of the board have changed somewhat. We now have people who serve as trustees that actually work for a living. The rest of us are retired, but there's two members of the board that are still employed. As such, we agreed that we would have the meetings set for seven o'clock in the evening. So we got to find that part of it all right. It was awkward setting the date for this meeting today to accommodate these members, but I appreciated everybody's cooperation in getting this done today. As a matter of fact, I think one of our members is out of here ahead in front of Hawaii period of work, so. However, let's talk about the regular board meeting schedule. I'll almost start with trustee Lockson, since you're one of the people still gainfully employed, perhaps you could.
Well, I would just like to make a suggestion because plans have been made down the road, and I was just wondering if for the next two months, instead of having the third Wednesday of every month, that we could have it changed to the second Wednesday of every month. Because of Christmas, number one, number two of planned holidays were planned beginning of last year, so I was wondering if it's possible to change, so we'll have a whole, all of the committee members will be here, if we could go ahead and change the next two months to the second Wednesday, and then after that, I go to the third, go back to the regular third Wednesday. And then, because I understand, I think Kevin, you had some issues with the budgeting.
My only concern, yes, Mr. Trustee, with respect to the second Wednesdays, that does make it difficult for me to get the monthly financial reports up to the board in time, because by the time we have an opportunity to close off the month, have the check run done, for me to print off the report, put it into a format ready to present and review it myself, not probably going to be enough time. But again, you know, it's up to the board's program as to whether they would like those meetings. I would recommend though, that if we are going to set a regular schedule, that we set it consistently for the next five months, because it is important, remember, this is the schedule to take us through the next AGM. This board's mandate currently is the next five months until the AGM is done, and then potentially the new board comes into place, so this would carry us through March, I guess April, just to have a point in the AGM.
So if there's not going to be much change in the meantime, are you recommending that we go, if we wanted to go with the second week, we could still do that? And it would just be brought up at the following meeting, I guess, month of the meeting, is there that much changes?
Again, that's entirely up to the majority of the board.
Okay, I see.
If the majority of the board would like it to be the second Wednesday, then we'll make it work.
Okay, trustee Keller.
I would like to suggest, given that December is a completely unusual month, that we set a meeting in December on a Sunday, at the beginning of December, like December 4th, just for, because we have so many things that we've already, that we've already committed to discussing, and then that's early enough that it doesn't interfere with Christmas, and then set the regular reoccurring board meetings effective January. And I would like to propose that it be the third, it was the third Wednesday, correct? I would like to suggest, I have a conflicting meeting on the third Wednesday, so I would like to propose the third Thursday, or likewise, the fourth Wednesday. So those would be my preferences.
Okay.
I'm fairly flexible, but I am still working.
Yeah, I am as well.
My apologies.
Wednesday, Wednesdays or Thursdays are the best days for me, so I am flexible.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we do this then? Totally out there. This won't conflict with anybody, except Kevin. Why don't we go with trustee Lockson's proposal that we use the second Wednesday of December and the second Wednesday of January for.
Of December, no, I propose December being.
I know you did, but we can move it to the second Wednesday, surely. What is the date on the second? What, Sunday, Phil?
Fourteenth of December.
Fourteenth of December.
That's why I was saying for just. December is a conflict, that's why I suggested Sunday, because December is completely an unusual month.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, we can certainly play around with December a little bit, given that we do have an orientation session that I'm having scheduled, that's going to be already on a weekend.
Yes.
And assuming we set some committees, it may not be a bad idea to allow those committees to meet first before we have a board meeting, so then we can determine if there's sufficient enough business for a board meeting in December, or if we want to push that into January, as long as the committees are given the opportunity to do their work and we do have this orientation session.
Okay. So what do you, what date are you proposing?
Again, if it's the second Wednesday.
Wednesday is a completely.
Wednesday, yeah.
I'd like Thursday.
Okay. Well, I'm out of here on Thursday. How about Tuesday? No?
You're out of your business Thursday.
No, we're not talking about December.
We're talking about January.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, January, I'm back here on January 8th, so.
So Thursday's the third Thursday.
Yeah.
Which is the date.
What date is that?
January is the 19th.
No, I'm talking reoccurring, third Thursdays from now on. You're away every third Thursday?
I'm saying I'd be away in January, that's what I was trying to say, is if we did, if we changed the two meetings coming up because of previous engagements, just for the two for December and January, and then go back to the regular meetings after that, I'm fine, and then that clears us all from.
Well, it doesn't clear me.
Well.
So the third Thursday.
Again, if I may, it is important to remember that as long as we have a quorum, a board meeting can still be held, I mean, there will be times, more often than not, where a particular trustee may not be able to be available, but as long as the majority of the board is there, and certainly we have a quorum, we can continue to go ahead with the board meeting.
Do I put a motion forward for that?
Yes, I guess we're gonna have to, so let's.
Well, I'd like to put a motion forward.
All right, what's your motion?
I'd like to put a motion forward, do we go the second Wednesday of December and January, the first two weeks, the first, the second Wednesday of December and January, and then after that, we want to go back to the third week of September, I'm fine.
The third Thursday, please, I've just said that Wednesdays do not work.
Okay, well, let's go the first two, I still want to go with December and January for the first, the two Wednesdays, okay? I'm putting a motion forward, after that, I'm flexible.
Great, so I'd like to say that it be the third Thursday.
We've got a motion on that we have a meeting set for second Wednesday in December.
And January.
And the second Wednesday in January, following which, as I understand it, we revert to the third Wednesday of every month.
Thursday. Could you please revert to the third Thursday, please?
Right now, there's a motion on.
Yes. Is there a second or two, Mr. Lockson's, trustee Lockson's motion?
I'll second.
Okay.
I'd like to move an amendment to that motion.
Okay.
I'd like the motion to be amended to the second Wednesday of December, the second Wednesday in January, and after that, the third Thursday.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we can all live with that.
Thank you.
Okay? So therefore, let's have a vote.
Okay, so can you just move your lead a bit?
I can do that.
Go ahead.
So far, we have the December and January board meetings will be the second Wednesday, this all happens on a.
Okay.
And then for February and March, a friendly amendment was to have it come on Thursday.
That will carry through.
Yeah, that will carry through to the AGM.
Okay, fair enough. All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I will make sure that gets to be posted.
All right. All right, now, the next order of business, establishment of board committees. Now, just for the sake of information there, the previous board had gone away with two committees. One was the fire services committee, and the other one was the finance committee, as they had felt that they were somewhat redundant. Now, I'm just going to throw this out there, I agreed with that, as a matter of fact, I think I sent a motion on, I believe they were rather redundant. There is presently, these board committees, or the public works, heart of public works, and the fire services rescue committee. Well, actually, it's a new fire hall committee for the fire services rescue. So what I would like to suggest, and this can be over discussed, discussion, is that we simply keep those three committees, and then I want the board to think about which committee they would like to serve on, between now and perhaps the next meeting. So, does anyone, any comments, Mr. Trustee Lockson?
I'm fine with that, that gives us time to think about it.
Trustee Henning?
Yeah, I just wondered, should we be advertising for people to join these committees, or are these committees established and on hold, or?
I can speak to another committee, so we did have members in those committees that, once those committees were put to events, obviously, that occurred. I can certainly go back to all of those individuals, if that's the desire of the board, and see if they're prepared to continue to wish to sit on those committees. Barring that, then, yes, we do have terms of reference in place for both of those committees with respect to the number of members that would be on them, and then we can always advertise for any vacancies. And then we would have to select a trustee as chair for one of those two committees.
So you'd be able to accomplish that by the next meeting, then?
Yeah.
I'd like to point out also at this time that all trustees are invited to attend those meetings, as the fact that they're trustee.
I would like to see these, the board be open to everybody and sort of going back to the old board, members of the old board, I would like to see volunteers in the public to come forward, or at least be involved with that. You know, they do, because with that, Kevin, as you, as you were talking, I guess that you said to include the old board members?
No, no, no.
Old committee members, I'm sorry.
We had people from the community who were volunteers to sit on those committees. Plus, every board member was provided the opportunity to attend, they weren't necessarily as committee members, although we would have a board member be a chair of each committee.
Okay, and?
So one of the current board would be chair of the public works committee and chair of the fire hall working room committee. And then, assuming I get such direction, I will go back to those community volunteers that were sitting on those committees to see if they are still interested. If they are not, then we would then have to advertise for any vacancies.
So is there so many committed to each?
Yes, we have, the term of reference state, how many volunteer members can be on any given committee.
I guess all I'm saying is, I'd like to see it open, if possible, anybody that wants to volunteer.
Which has been.
Well, what's the numbers of the existing committees compared to?
Leave four, up to four volunteer community members.
So what's the maximum per committee?
Yeah.
Is that what?
That's four. Because, of course, the fire hall working room is a little different, that also have representatives from the fire service on it as well. Given that's.
Okay, it's interesting. Okay, can I get a motion from the board that we accept the status quo of the two committees at present? Bear in mind that we can add to these if the need arises at some point, but to accept the fact that the two standing committees would be public works and the new fire hall committee, we have a motion to accept that.
And we accept that?
Yeah.
I second that.
And all those in favor? Okay, motion's carried. Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, other business.
Sorry if I missed the issue of the holiday hours.
Oh, I thought you addressed that earlier.
I did, I reported.
Oh, okay, yes.
I came with that word. Again, historically, yes, we've not been open during that week between Christmas and New Year's, just because nobody's coming in the office, it's pretty dead, and we just basically will take all the time to do their office. Public works staff are still around, obviously, and if there's any emergencies, it's hard for them to admit on this move.
Okay, well, that doesn't require.
No, no, it's required. And I'll make sure I get.
And a well-reserved press. Other business, okay, now we have a request for the floor, trustee Keller. Okay?
Thank you. My, I simply wanted to have a chance to address the landlords, the beauty of the whole meeting was such a strange meeting, that I felt that I didn't have a chance to, first of all, say thank you to all of the landlords who voted, and thank you to everyone who is concerned for the, for our community. And I, now that I've had the privilege of reading the work done by the previous board, I'm truly grateful to them for the hard work that they did, we are in good financial strength, and thanks to a lot of hard work that they put in, brings us to the financial situation that we are in today. And I also want to reaffirm my commitment to the landlords, that I will speak and vote on issues based on factual evidence, not rumor and innuendo. And I am a stickler, in fact, my family would call me a bit obsessive compulsive, I'm an absolute stickler for detail and factual information. In my opinion, a lot of the division in the community has been a direct result of rumor and innuendo, and I will not engage in that, that's my commitment to each and every one of you, even those who disagree with me. I take that very seriously, so thank you.
Thank you, trustee Lockson. Okay, now we move on to the last item on other business. Ubid, Kip Water Agreement, I understand trustee Lockson.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put a motion forward. Mr. Chair, I would like to put a motion forward to instruct our administrator to contact our legal counsel, Mr. Peter Johnson, within the next three business days, with instruction to contact legal counsel for 34083 Yukon and Corp and Kensington Island Properties, communicating the intent of this board to enact the force majeure clause granting the requested time extension to the water infrastructure agreement dated April 8, 2011.
I second that motion.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the board for discussion, that basically is asking our administrator to go to the contact, our legal representative, I believe his name is Johnson, to enable the force majeure act that was presented in a contract between Kensington Island Properties and Union Bay District.
A point of order, Mr. Chairman, I don't see a copy of this infrastructure agreement in our package, and we're being asked to make a decision here, so how can we make a decision without a copy of the agreement? It's also very, very clear, I think I'm still talking, that there is a lot of misunderstanding around that agreement, what the legal terms mean or don't mean. The board needs an opportunity to thoroughly examine that agreement with legal counsel, so we all know exactly what we want. Excuse me. I'm prepared to sit here and talk as long as it takes to this evening or today, to ensure that everybody understands that agreement. So if I can be provided a copy of the agreement, I will start to go through the agreement, and we can go from there.
Okay? Now, the, do you wish to make a?
I've asked on a point of order that we don't have that agreement in front of this package.
All right. Do you wish to make a motion to?
A point of order doesn't require a motion.
No, I realize that, however, okay, you don't wish to make a motion. Well.
So can you provide a copy of that agreement?
As a matter of fact, here's a copy right there.
Okay, so, just so we all know what's in the agreement, I think we need to go through it. Witness that whereas Ubid is the holder of a water license, it is the authority under Act 745 with a local.
I don't think we have to go through this.
So we have to make a decision on something that we don't have in front of us.
That water structure agreement has been out in public domain for a long time.
And it is very apparent.
It's been posted on the website, it's been available to everyone.
It is very apparent, Mr. Chairman, that there's a lot of misunderstanding of what's in this agreement.
Well, that's not.
You are asking trustees to make a decision here.
Yes, that's right.
Without having the opportunity to examine this agreement. I am somewhat shocked, as you can probably tell from my voice, that this new board would bring this forward at this time to renew this agreement, with all of the work in the community around what has gone on here, all of the dissent, all of the visions, we will do nothing but open that body further. It's very, very apparent, we all need to really understand what we're getting into, what we are committing the landlords to under this agreement, and what this board is potentially opening this community up to in terms of liability of this agreement. So I'm not finished yet, please, I'm gonna call for it a little bit longer here. So we, there's been a lot of, a lot of discussion around the various clauses in the agreement, what they mean, what they don't mean. Let's go through some of those clauses. Okay, so, and unfortunately, this is a total surprise that this has come up, so I haven't had time to really prepare, but clause 2.3, "The water treatment facility, while situated at the temporary waters facility site, as part of Phase 1 Works, shall be designed and constructed by a developer to have initial capacity to serve a minimum requirement the 650 approximate existing residents in Union Bay. For as long as the developer remains owner of the water treatment facility, no alteration or modification of the water treatment facility shall be undertaken to increase the capacity of the water treatment facility, unless the developer in its sole and exclusive discretion approves those changes to the water treatment facility as part of Phase 1 Works. Subject always to the requirement of the water distribution bylaw or servicing bylaw, parties contemplate that alterations or modifications made from time to time undertaken at the water treatment facility to increase the capacity of the water treatment facility to handle up to approximately 1,150 residents in total within the Ubid service area, which 1,150 residents will include 650 approximately existing residents, plus up to 500 new residents within the land. I'm told that that number will exceed our water license, which will put us in a very tenuous legal position. Should we make a commitment to a development, and we cannot meet that commitment, we will all be liable for loss of profit, losses, as an air mass decision. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the development agrees Ubid may utilize the water treatment facility to add 10 residents per year to the Ubid water services. Ubid acknowledges the development has been approved by the Comox Valley Regional District to have up to 3,354 residences, and accordingly, subject to the terms and conditions of this agreement, subject always to the requirement of the water distribution bylaw and the water servicing bylaw, Ubid agrees the water treatment facility, when located at a permanent water facility site as part of Phase 2 Works, may be designed and constructed by the developer to have a capacity to serve up to 3,354 residences within development, in addition to the Union Bay residents serviced by Phase 1. While the developer and Ubid entered into this agreement with the expectation that the added capacity within the water supply infrastructure results from construction of Phase 1, and Phase 1 Works and Phase 2 Works. and Phase One Works and Phase Two Works will facilitate the development, both parties acknowledge that Ubid does not have the legal authority to reserve capacity for the development in the water infrastructure supply, and that until the development is completely full, in the event other landlords within the Ubid service area are entitled to make an application for water services.